Hello everyone, I'm sorry for the holdup, we had another meeting in here which ran a little bit overtime. But welcome to the special meeting for the Toowoomba Regional Council for the 17th of February 2021. This meeting is open to the public and will also be livestreamed. I would like to thank those of you in the room with us today and acknowledge everyone watching via council's social media channels. I acknowledge the mayor, portfolio leader councillor Carl, councillors, chief executive officer, general manager, our planning and development group. And I acknowledge the Aboriginal parties whose songlines traverse these lands we meet on today. The Western Waka Waka and Gible peoples and Jarroa peoples and pay our respects to elders, past, present and emerging. For they hold the knowledge, rich traditions and bold ambitions of Australia's first peoples. Uh, we do not have any apologies or anyone seeking leave of absence. Um, I do have a couple of declarations, so councillor Antonio?
Uh, can I just declare a declarable conflict of interest in respect to item four? I request that it be minuted that I declared a declarable conflict of interest in relation to MCU one stroke twenty seventeen. Stroke sixty six twenty four, two to one sixty Townsend Street, one to five and sixty nine to seventy one New England Highway Mount Kynock. In one Blue Meadow Court, Blue Mountains Heights, that was declared at the ordinary meeting of council on twenty second of October two thousand and twenty. And I advise that when this application is considered, I propose to leave and stay away from the place where the meeting was being held while the matter was being discussed.
Thank you councillor Antonio, um councillor Von Hough?
Thanks madam chair, I have a declarable conflict of interest with item four. The development application for a preliminary approval for a material change of use, operational work, building work and reconfiguring a lot, including variation request. Located at Townsend Street, New England Highway and Blue Meadow Court, Blue Mountain Heights. I inform this meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in this matter. As defined in section one fifty E N of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, the nature of my interest is as follows. This declarable conflict of interest arises because my parents, their address is unlisted at Mount Kynock reside proximate to the land and the, uh, to the land. The subject of the development application, I propose to leave and stay away from the place where the meeting is being held while this matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you councillor Von Hough, councillor Shine?
Uh, thank you chair, item four as well, um MCU I or one stroke two O one seven stroke six six two four. Development application for preliminary approval for a material change of use, operational works, building work and reconfiguring a lot. Including a variation request located at two stroke one six O Townsend Street. Uh, one dash five at sixty nine dash seventy one New England Highway Mount Kynock. And one, um, Blue Meadow Court, Blue Mountain Heights. Uh, I inform this meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in this matter. As defined in section one five O E N of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine. The nature of my interest is as follows, Thomas James McVeigh, um, is an involved, uh, party, who is an involved party? Particulars, uh, name of the related party, Thomas J- uh, James McVeigh. Two, the nature of my relationship with this related part, party is, is or was, colon. I was the, I was in a legal firm partnership with Mr. McVeigh and others between nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety five. And since then, I was a shareholder in a, in a company or companies with him. And others in several development projects, although none for some time. The nature of the related party's interest in this, uh, matters are, he is a director of Mount Kynock Investments. I propose to leave and stay away from this place, uh, where, when the matter, uh, when the me, where the meeting is being held. While the matter is discussed and voted on.
So you're choosing to leave councillor Shine rather than the, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and councillor McMahon?
Thank you chair, uh, I wish to declare a declarable conflict of interest relating to item four. MCU I slash two O one seven slash six six two four. Development application for a preliminary approval for a material change of use, operational work, building work. And for reconfiguring a lot, including a variation request at Townsend Street, New England Highway, Mount Kynock and one Blue Meadows Court. I inform this meeting, I have a declarable conflict of interest in the matter. As defined in section one fifty E N of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, the nature of my interest is as follows. This declarable conflict of interest arrives because my wife's uncle and aunt live on the New England Highway directly across the road from the proposed development. I am not particularly close to them and have not been in contact with them regarding this matter, I wish to participate in the decision in relation to this matter. I acknowledge that eligible councillors must now determine pursuant to section one fifty E S of the Local Government Act. Two thousand and nine, whether I, one, may participate in the decision about this matter, including by voting or two must leave the meeting. Including any area set aside for the public and stay away from the meeting or the eligible councillors decide on the matter. Or three may participate in the decision about this matter, subject to conditions, thank you chair.
Thank you councillor, councillors, do you have any questions for councillor McMahon?
Question.
Councillor McDonnell?
Thanks madam chair, through you to councillor McMahon, councillor McMahon, um, of the submitters are any of those related or do you know if they are? Any connection to your wife's uncle and aunt?
There are no submitters or interested parties in the table of contents that I know of that have any relation to me.
That being the case, madam chair, unless there's others, thank you.
Councillor Summerfield?
Uh, thank you madam chair, uh, councillor Tim, have, um, these people actually engaged in conversation with you about this?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Councillor Carl?
Uh, councillor Tim, notwithstanding you've said the fact that you don't have a close relationship with your wife's uncle and aunt. Do you feel as though you would be able to vote impartially, not so much, uh, in respect of your relationship? To those mentioned, but, uh, your, your partner or other family members have a view on that? Do you think that would influence your vote?
Yeah, thanks for the question councillor Bill, no, um, I think that I can vote impartially. And normally on this, as with regard to any other matter on the merits of it, in, in, in light of its own facts.
Thanks.
So councillors, councillor Summerfield?
I'm happy to move that councillor Tim be able to stay in the room and, uh, participate in the discussion and vote.
A second after that councillor Shay, all those in favour? Carrie, do you?
Question, madam.
Reasons, uh, councillor Summerfield?
Reasons being, um, councillor Tim has indicated, uh, there's been no communication in relation to this development application. Um, he seems to be quite removed from, from these relatives by marriage and, um. I feel quite comfortable that, that he is, um, capable of, of making the decision fairly.
Thank you, uh, councillor, are you right with that Wendy yet? Uh, councillor Carl, do you have a question?
Um, yeah, I do have a, a question, but not in relation to councillor Tim, but probably an ad with permission of councillor Nancy. That councillor Tim doesn't stand to gain or lose any more than, um, anyone else, if that's appropriate.
Happy to have that included councillor Summerfield, yeah. Okay, that was carried unanimously, did I, yep, thank you, another question councillor Carl?
Question in relation, can, through you to the CEO, can you refresh me, uh, I, I never. Caught the reason for councillor Antonio leaving the room, he referred to a previous meeting. Can you refresh my memory as to the reasons why he felt he had a declarable interest?
What was his reason? Oh, sorry.
I understand Jason Wardle was his, was a relative of his?
Oh, right.
That was the, uh, that was the previous reason?
I just couldn't remember what it was, that's all.
Okay, well done, all right, so now, can I have someone move that we suspend standing orders to discuss the item here today? Councillor Shay, councillor Melissa Taylor, all those in favour? It's carried, so we move to item number four, I'm not going to read that out again after all those conflicts, reading out the item, thank you. Peter for taking us through this today, thank you.
Good afternoon councillors, members of the public, council colleagues and those watching online. The report before you considers a development application for a preliminary approval for a material change of use, operational work, building work and reconfiguring a lot. Including a variation request on land located at two to one hundred and sixty Townsend Street. One to five and sixty nine to seventy one New England Highway, Mount Kynock and one Blue Meadow Court, Blue Mountain Heights. The hundred and forty seven, uh, attachment two figure one please Wendy, the hundred and forty seven hectare site comprises five contiguous allotments. And is located predominantly in the emerging community zone and partly in the resident, uh, rural residential zone. So as you can see, the majority of the site is located in the, and this is the part, uh, the north east of the site located within the rural residential. Importantly, it is noted that the purpose of the emerging key community zone is to identify land to be used for future urban purposes. And provide for the timely conversion of land for non-urban to not urban purposes in accordance with a master plan. The site is also adjacent councils, Mount Kynock Water Treatment Plant and approximately one kilometre east of council's Whatahala Waste Water Treatment Plant. Attachment two figure four please Wendy, the site is also partly located within the priority infrastructure area. As defined by council's local government infrastructure plan. And I will touch on some of the implications of that later in the presentation. But it's only this, this part in the southeastern corner that's actually within the priority infrastructure area. If we could, attachment four please Wendy. So, the development application comprises a preliminary approval for a material change of use, operational work, building work and reconfiguring a lot. Within the habitat variation area. And a variation request which proposes to vary the effect of the planning scheme within the habitat variation area. To facilitate development of the site for a master planned residential community. The variations proposed are detailed within the variation scheme document in attachment three of this report. And generally comprise variations to the following parts of the planning scheme. Part five tables of assessment, part six zone codes, part nine development codes and appendix two mapping. The mapping is in the form of the introduction of the habitat structure plan, which you can see on screen there. Which identifies and will guide land use intent across the subject site. In addition, the variation scheme document and habitat structure plan identifies land and locations for seven precincts. You've got four residential precincts, they're generally the pinkish and this brown area here. With lot sizes, um, ranging from none specified in the medium density residential, so that's your darker pink. Um, to twelve hundred and fifty square metres in the hilltop residential precinct, and again, that's your, um, your, your brownie area there. A local centre precinct with a larger centre to the east on the New England Highway and a smaller convenience type centre in the western part of the site. The centre's there and just there. An open space precinct with a district park and two local parks and a community facilities, uh, facilities precinct. So the, um, the open space is obviously the green, you've got a district node and two, two local nodes in the, the green stars. And the community facilities precinct is the yellow area as shown on the habitat structure plan. The variation scheme document and habitat structure plan also detail locations of new road networks, including a new collector road connecting to old Gambungji Road. Location of indicative stormwater detention basins. And a route for the principal cycle network which is to be delivered by the Department of Transport and Main Roads. Now, as I mentioned earlier, council's Mount Kynock Water Treatment Plant is located adjacent to the site to the east. The water treatment plant is planned to meet its capacity limit in the near future and requires additional land to accommodate future upgrade. During assessment of the development application, council consulted with the applicant and undertook relevant technical assessments to identify the land. Requirements for the proposed upgrade and the establishment of appropriate buffer distances between the upgraded water treatment plant and the completed development. Including sensitive land uses, commercial uses and public places. This land has been designated as community facilities in the habitat structure plan. And I'll just also point out that to the south of the development row, there, that local centre there, that's, uh, a restricted commercial area. And, uh, vulnerable uses and sensitive land uses as defined by the planning regulation twenty seventeen are not supported in that location. In the very, um, habitat variation scheme document. Development application was subject to impact assessment. Four properly made submissions were received during the public notification period, three opposing the development and one was neutral. The neutral, uh, submission was by APA Group, which was also a referral agency. The planning grounds of the submissions generally relate to matters such as increased demand on infrastructure, lot size and design. Landscape character and amenity and conflict with planning instruments. The properly made submissions are considered in detail within this report. However, I will summarise assessment of the submissions here and in doing so, address the other significant planning matters that form part of assessment. And, and a corporation into the variation scheme document, habitat structure plan and the recommended conditions of approval. In regards infrastructure, the impact of the completed development on council's infrastructure was considered as part of the assessment of the development application. And is detailed in the technical notes in attachment seven of this report. In particular, I would like to draw your attention to the water infrastructure and park infrastructure technical assessments. Which have identified that land on the subject site is required to accommodate the future expansion of council's Mount Kynock Waste Water Treat, well, Water Treatment Plant. And fulfil the open space accessibility requirements of the planning scheme for the development respectively. Where appropriate, conditions have been recommended for inclusion in any development approval given. To ensure that the proposed development will be connected to all required infrastructure networks. And that the operational efficiency and maintenance requirements of the infrastructure networks will not be adversely affected by the proposed development. In regards the open space requirements for the proposed development, it is noted the completed development will result in approximately two thousand five hundred and seventy additional persons. Accessing council's park network. The completed development is unable to be serviced by the existing and identified future trunk park network. As identified in the local government infrastructure plan, as that, that access, that catchment isn't, uh, doesn't cover this site. As such, additional parks are required to adequately service and meet the additional demand created by the development. These areas total four point four hectares in area and are shown as open space on the habitat structure plan. With approximate locations of local activity nodes and district activity nodes also detailed. The parkland must be delivered to the standard specified in appendix F of the variation scheme document. And these are commensurate to our desired standards of service, uh, and in fact, they actually go into more detail than our desired standards of service currently in the planning scheme. Moreover, this report recommends the inclusion of an extra payment condition as a condition of approval. Whereby the proponent may pay the calculated monetary sum in lieu of providing the trunk park infrastructure. Given the development is located mostly, mostly outside the priority infrastructure area. As always with extra payment conditions, the applicant may provide the parkland in lieu of the payment. In relation to the natural features and landscape values of the site, it is considered that the variation scheme document and habitat structure plan. And the formulation of those documents have appropriately considered the natural features and landscape values of the site. In particular, it is noted that approximately eighty percent of the regular, regulated vegetation on the site is to be retained within the open space precinct. Moreover, the location of this precinct creates opportunities for council in the future to extend the linear park corridor to the south. And provides active recreational opportunities for residents to engage with the natural values on the site. The open space precincts also provides a logical and efficient route for the principal cycle network, which is to be delivered by the Department of Transport and Main Roads. With regards to the submissions regarding lot size and design, it is noted that the development application was submitted and assessed under version eighteen of the Toowoomba Regional Planning Scheme. With appropriate weight given to subsequent versions of the planning scheme. Significant weight has been given to versions twenty and twenty-two of the planning scheme in the assessment. As these versions clarified and strengthened council's policy position in relation to non-residential development in residential zones. And medium density residential, well, medium density development respectively. The policy intent of these versions of the planning scheme has been incorporated into the variation scheme document and the habitat structure plan. Including the requirements for hatchet lots, design standards for development on lots less than four hundred and fifty square metres in area. And the location and form of dual occupancy and multiple dwelling development. In this respect, it is considered council's current poly position on lot size and design is generally reflected in the variation scheme document and habitat structure plan. It is also important to note that approval of this development application does not approve development. Approval of development is subject to future development applications for development permits. Which will be assessed against relevant planning instruments, including the variation scheme document and habitat structure plan. So the development application was referred to the Department of State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government of Planning, Ergon Energy and APA Group. All referral agencies had no objection to approval of the development application, the referral agency responses can be viewed in attachment four. So in conclusion, the development application, including the proposed variations, has been assessed with regards to the applicable assessment benchmarks. Properly made submissions and relevant matters as identified within this report and the attached draft statement of reasons. It is considered the proposed development generally complies with the assessment benchmarks or it can be conditioned to comply. Where the applicant has not provided sufficient information, conditions have been recommended to ensure compliance. Relevant matters also support approval of the development application. As such, it is recommended the development application be approved in accordance with the recommendation within this report. As refusal of the development application in this context would not advance the purpose of the planning act twenty sixteen, thank you.
Well done Peter, thank you, councillors, any questions for the officer? Councillor Carl?
I've got a couple at this stage, check, um. The collector road on the structure plan there, the, the collector road down to the Gambungji Road there. Um, just wondering, at what stage will that be developed? Um, and what's the future proposal for, and it's obviously only a road reserve at this stage. The Gambungji, uh, the road down to Gambungji Road, old Gambungji Road. Um, when is that likely to be developed and I ask it in the context of, um. I presume there'll be preceding stages over this site. Um, and when we get down to that natural vegetation there that's being preserved as linear corridors or parks. It would seem to be an element of risk of one way in and one way out in the event of a, a bushfire or an emergency.
Thanks for the councillor, uh, through you madam chair, I'd just draw your attention to condition six, uh, six councillor. Which requires that the, uh, proponents submit a staging plan detailing the proposed staging of the development to create neighbourhoods. And align with the infrastructure provision in accordance with the approved variation scheme document. Now, the detail, obviously this is a very, a, a preliminary approval, the details have not been worked out yet. Once the applicant has done more detailed design, they will have to submit that staging plan. And those sorts of issues will be considered in endorsement and approval of that staging plan. Such things as traffic generation rates etcetera, um, ways in and out of the site.
I, I get this is a variation, um, document that we're, that we're approving to the planning scheme. However, it's hard to say no when a, an overall structure plan is put in place, it's a. It's basically an approval for the, for everything inside these bounds to take place and I get that there'll be more detailed planning, but. They, they to me would be major, um, structural things to consider and have some upfront information even at this stage. Uh, considering safety as it's staged and developed and I'd probably maybe a question when the applicant comes up as to. If they've got any ideas of timing, likely timing on that, um.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, it's certainly something that will be considered when that staging plan is submitted. Um, it's essentially compliance with the conditions of a development approval, consistency with the variation scheme document and the habitat structure plan. Uh, and, and the requirements of that will all be considered, uh, in assessing that staging plan. And, and I do draw your particular attention to the wording in that condition that says to create neighbourhoods and align with infrastructure provision and. And that's really, I think, the issue that you're touching on there.
And the, the only, the other one I have at the moment is in the document itself on page six. That's seventy four of five five seven on board books, um. In 3.2.8, item I, I'd just like a little bit of an understanding, even though this is a structure plan, an overall area, approval for basically a planning scheme within the planning scheme in layman's terms.
Whereabouts are you councillor Carl, sorry? What page on Board Books?
Page 74 of 557 on Board Books for councillors and page six of the preliminary approval variation request, volume three, variation scheme, version seven, and precinct planning, the actual document itself.
So that's the provision that reads dual occupancy development is dispersed through residential neighbourhoods and does not become the dominant housing form in the street?
That's correct. I'd just like a little bit of an explanation on how they propose to regulate that, even though this is a structure plan, but it's a bit late once you get into stages and, and I'd be interested to hear the mechanism on how they propose to control that. There's some, been some legacies in urban areas left that are not very desirable.
So, so the short answer is the variation scheme document essentially works in that respect, in particular in regards that medium density development, small lots, dual occupancies, multiple dwellings, hatchet lots, et cetera. It really, any development for reconfiguring a lot or material change of use will be assessed against the same assessment benchmarks as those sorts of development would. So the, the variation scheme document actually calls up the small lot housing design code, the, the most recent version of the, well, version 24, now we're into version 25 of the scheme, but version 24, which it didn't change the medium density residential code. And also the reconfiguring a lot code, which amendment 16, which made version 22 of the scheme introduced a whole lot of requirements for, and mechanisms such as designated dual occupancy lots and plans of development on small lots. Now, all of these mechanisms are incorporated into the variation scheme document, so the short answer is there won't be any difference.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm asking. I don't necessarily think we've got that right at this iteration of our planning scheme and I would assume there'd be some review on that in the new planning scheme. I'd be just interested to hear the applicant's thoughts on that.
That's McMahon.
Thank you Chair, couple of questions. I was just wondering if you could rewrite that part about not enough parks and as a result paying money for that? And is that still in line with their structure plan in, in this variation scheme? Is that the one that doesn't have enough parks?
Yes. So if we could go to attachment two, figure four, I think is probably the most relevant, the PIA aerial. So as I mentioned earlier, only a small part of the site is located within council's priority infrastructure area, which is part of the local government infrastructure plan. And as you know, the local government infrastructure, structure plan sets out the, the trunk infrastructure requirements for development until 2031. Now, because this is out, the majority of the site is outside the priority infrastructure area.
Is the majority in?
No. It's, it's, it's a bit of a deceptive aerial, but it's, it's this part that's in. Yeah, yeah. It's that part that's in. Now, essentially, council has not planned to provide park infrastructure for development on this site. And what, what we've done then in the assessment is understand what the equivalent demand will be on the park network and that has resulted in approximately 4.4 hectares of open space requirement to service the, the catchment in that area as a result of the additional demand by the development. Now, as I mentioned earlier, it's condition 21, I believe, in the report. It's the extra payment condition. The, it basically gives the, the proponent of the development approval an option where they can pay that monetary contribution upfront and council delivers the parkland or they can deliver the parkland and, you know, they may be able to deliver it at less cost than that monetary contribution, but that's, that's an option for them to pursue. But that, 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 basically the reason why there isn't enough park for the development is it because it's, it hasn't been planned for because it's outside the priority infrastructure area?
Follow up on that before my next question. We had one of these last week where there was some money to be paid because a veldt needed to be changed, there was some trees to be taken down, and there wasn't a guarantee that that money would be spent in the same area necessarily. Is this different where if there was a monetary payment, it would be spent in that area on parkland?
100%.
That's good enough for me. Good. Second question, thank you Chair, if I may. Just with where this is geographically, it's that lovely little area between Highfields and Tuwumba, which is relatively, you know, not a lot going on there at, at present, but out to, you know, Garry Cordor, it's kind of encroaching on that way. And a question that often gets asked to me is, are we planning for, say, wildlife corridors for as we grow to have like a chain of, of green spaces to kind of link them all up? And is there a policy on this, on wildlife corridors that may have been, or we may be able to put in place in regards to this?
So, I'll speak on behalf of strategic planning and economic development to some degree and just mention the green infrastructure strategy and that is council's current strategy and policy position in relation to the establishment of park and other infrastructure within the local government area. So that, that's essentially the strategy. That has been in part considered in, in, in this development, but not really, I would say, we, we were more, we were more interested in the environmental significance overlay and the requirements of that and any other environmental features. But look, what I, what I will do is I'll get our environmental officer, just to touch briefly on the connectivity and some of the constraints of the site, because the site is, is somewhat disconnected as it is.
Welcome Luke.
Good afternoon Chair, good afternoon everyone. Could we have figure four back up again showing the habitat? That, that figure will be absolutely fine. So my colleague Peter was correct, green infrastructure programme is the, the overarching strategy that's still in development as far as I'm aware. And again, I won't speak on behalf of Sped completely, but it did nominate this area as a general corridor where not as much development is going through. At the moment though, when we're looking at the limitations, you've obviously got the New England Highway, you've got the second range crossing. So when we're looking at areas that come up the range towards our site, you've got, and a rail corridor as well, you've got a severe limitation, not only just from impacts such as traffic, but just the topography and the gradients, the embankments coming out of those facilities where a lot of animals are not going to be able to migrate very well from these eastern areas across into this area here. Council's environmental overlay for these areas include these two fingers running up the gullies that were nominated as open space, some area over here, as well as this area here, which is a little bit within the, the lot under application, but not included under the strategic habitat plan where development is going to occur. So when we were assessing it against our environmental significance overlay code, where we're looking at factors like individual plants and connectivity, they're retaining, as Peter has already mentioned, 80% of that vegetation listed under our environmental significance overlay as open space parkland. You've then taking into consideration as a council officer, what might happen adjacent to it and we're looking at connection, which is more so going to run to the north west and what vegetation may be up there. This development application being submitted in 2017, for example, is not included as part of the koala habitat areas. Therefore, that can't be applied to this site, but any development that then happens in this little pocket and further in this area here, for example, if we're looking at something like koalas, that's going to have to jump through several legislative hoops to have development included in that as well. So we're looking at it as a whole to be generically preserved in some way, shape or form through the open space corridors with some progression up to the north, a little bit through this area here, more so in this area continuing up through that portion of the site. There was an ecological impact assessment submitted in 2017. It was also peer reviewed by council's choice of peer reviewer. We received that information and come into agreement that generically speaking, the findings of the impact assessment as submitted could be acceptable. Lot of information, sorry.
A lot of information. Thank you for that answer and it does answer my question. Just, I suppose Chair, as a statement, I, I take your point about significant rail and road infrastructure around this area and the hill and the, the little animals probably aren't going to crawl up and over that, but this is one of the last areas between the linking of Tuwumba and Highfields and I want to make sure we do it right, I think.
Is there any other questions councillor Carl?
Yeah, just one in relation to the distance in the aerial view with the structure plan. Four of eight. Attachment four of eight.
Oh, the habitat structure plan, yeah.
Yeah, that's one. The distance from the boundary of this proposed developmental area to the sewerage plant in the bottom left hand corner. As a, it'll act in reverse, really sensitive receptors in the future. Can you tell me what that is?
It's approximately one kilometre and it's outside the buffer distance required by the planning scheme.
Outside?
It's, it's, yes. It's greater than, the separation distance is greater than the buffer distance required by the planning scheme.
No further, councillor Summerfield?
Thank you Chair. Peter, just following up on that, that means that when people build in this area and the beautiful aroma comes away from the Watalla Waste Water Treatment Plant, there won't be complaints coming in, which will impact our ability to continue to, that's a significant investment in infrastructure there for our council. Having once upon a time, many years ago, lived on the corner of Murphy's Creek Road and the New England Highway, a few times a year we would get a nice little waft of the aroma and you knew that that was part of living there. I'm just concerned, you know, it always comes back to the showgrounds thing. They built the showgrounds way out there and then people build all their houses around it and now they complain about the dust when there's an event on. So I'm just, there can be no, because that buffer's there, there can be no comeback on council when the, the wafting of the aroma from the Watalla Water Treatment Plant comes across.
I can't stand here and guarantee there will never be a complaint. Obviously climatic factors and everything takes, takes that into account. But what I, what I can say is that there's two, two important things and then I might actually get Water and Waste Services who are here today to, to speak to protection of their assets because that's been a very important part of the assessment of the application. In, in particular, I, I would suggest that in, in this area, well, in our location in Tuwumba, easterly winds during the hot summer months are your most prominent, so are your predominant winds. So we're blowing away from our subject site. And secondly, as I stated earlier, it's outside the buffer distance required by the planning scheme. But if, if Water and Waste Services would like to speak, I...
Thanks Ray.
No problems. Thank you for your time again councillors. In regards to this application, we made it apparent to the planning department about the criticality of the Mount Kynock Water Treatment Plant, as also mentioned by councillor Nancy, the criticality of the Waste Water Treatment Plant, which is not so far from this location. And also advised that because it's critical infrastructure, it operates 24/7 at times, that there would be staff coming and going, there's, there's lighting, there's noise, there's chemicals, there's transport and trucks and also our laboratory in this area. So it is a, a key piece of infrastructure for council. And as such, we need to be able to protect its borders, so to speak, so that no one's under any misunderstanding about what occurs and what happens on this site. So I notice here that we do have the additional piece of land allocated for, for water use, which is, which is fantastic and goes quite some way to protecting our asset and enabling a suitable expansion area for the next iteration of the Water Treatment Plant.
Does he question councillor Summerfield? Thank you. councillor Carl?
Just a question, three each here, maybe two Danielle or one of the planning staff. The area outside the PIA, the priority infrastructure area, I was, it's probably there, but I can't see it at the moment. The quantum of infrastructure costs or bring forward costs in that PIA, outside the PIA, one would naturally assume, looking at this site adjacent to the highway and some of the layout of that structure plan, that the first staging will be adjacent to the community open space and the green corridor there and naturally up along, adjacent to highway. So do we have an idea of the quantum of likely costs for trunk infrastructure that council hasn't accounted for, but the developer will have to pay if they develop that area outside of the PIA?
So the assessment, as mentioned in the presentation, the assessment, the impact of the development on council's infrastructure network is detailed in attachment seven, the technical notes. Now, that, that's all your water, storm water, sewer, park, et cetera, and transport networks. Now, with, with regards to water, the transport and the parks, there are additional trunk infrastructure requirements generated by the development. However, the, with regards to the transport and the water, these are already planned essentially and expected and, and in line with planning assumptions in the local government infrastructure plan. It is, it is only the parks network where there is such a, a bring forward cost, so to speak, in, in, in the form of that extra payment condition. That is, you know, it's, it's infrastructure, park infrastructure that council has not planned for, but is required to service the development. Typically, as, as you're well aware, it's at the, as part of future development applications and development approvals, it's generally at the developer's cost to connect to the trunk infrastructure network. So, you know, the reticulated water, sewerage, et cetera, that goes around and services each residential allotment will be provided by the developer and then taken on maintenance and become a council asset in due course. Yep. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. So there, those other networks other than the park is accounted for in the current budget?
Correct.
In their entirety?
Yes.
Thanks.
Councillor Mr. Talan?
Thank you Chair, through you, my apology, thank you Peter. My apologies if you've mentioned this, but the PCN, Principal Cycle Network, is that orange dotted line on figure two in the Habitat Structure Plan.
Yeah.
So what's, do, do we know the timing for TMR with that as opposed to, to this development? And will one or the other hinder one or the other?
No. Well, I mean, what I would say at the outset in relation to that is TMR weren't, I wouldn't say they were particularly interested or showed great enthusiasm because the, the referral agency, the Department of State Development, Infrastructure and Local Government and Planning, come back with no requirements for this development. They failed to mention the principal cycle network at all. It was only through some lobbying by DTMR and consultation between the applicant council and DTMR that provision for the principal site, cycle network was able to be made through the site. There was, there was a priority route identified. Now, it, it's, it sort of took a weird, weird... Now, it, it's, it sort of took a weird, weird, to get away from the gradients on the highway here, sort of talk a weird, weird route up High Winds Road and connected to the New England Highway further to the north. Now, the, obviously, the DTMR, the applicant council saw opportunity to provide a more logical, efficient route through the site. And, look, there's, there's two things with the dotted line here. The open space, if, if, if the money's paid upfront, will we get the open space and the land's there and you're building? If it's developed and the, and the, and the developer provides the open space, it might, again, that'll be part of assessment of the staging plan in terms of the timing. But what I would say is that it is a more efficient route, and what the variation scheme document does, and, and it is actually even a more efficient route to come through the community facilities precincts here, because there are some grade issues up that entrance road. Now, water services haven't done detailed design of their expansion yet, and it's, it may be possible to run the principal cycle network through there, and the variation scheme document and the purpose of the community's facilities precincts, it actually makes provision of that where agreed with council. So, essentially, the, the timing is a bit up in the air, and I can't speak for DTMR in terms of funding, but I also, what I can say is they've recently constructed a part of the network to the south of this subdivision here, to the actual rest of the network on the New England Highway there, so, and obviously north further as well. So, I think they'd be pretty keen to get going, but, yeah, the, the actual timing is still to be determined.
Okay, thank you. There's no further questions? I'll get, we don't have any of the submitters here. We have Andrew Bullen from Precinct Urban Planning. Would you, you're up and you're coming, come over. So as you know, Andrew, you get five minutes to perhaps clarify some points and then take some questions. Thank you.
Thanks Madam Chair and councillors for the opportunity to speak to the application today. I'll be fairly brief. Peter covered it fairly in, in a fair bit of detail, so I'll perhaps just qualify a few things and fill in some gaps. As Peter said, the fact the land is in the emerging community zone, essentially this process, it is an essential prerequisite to actually be able to go to the next, the next step and make some applications to subdivide and further use the land for the intended purpose in accordance with the master plan. So as Peter noted, the preliminary approval doesn't authorize a physical development of the site. If you like, it's a de facto rezoning, it puts a master plan and it puts some planning rules in place, and then they will guide and form the basis for how council will assess future development. Broadly, I think we all know what the development includes, but there are a few things we'd probably want to stress. Range of residential precincts across the site, that's intentional. Catering for a mix of housing styles from conventional residential to medium density to what is termed lifestyle and hillside residential uses, so all on, based on different configurations, lot sizes, different forms of housing, that's intentional. We don't want a homogenous residential area, we want it to cater for all stages of the life cycle. So people moving to that community can be there through all stages of their life, should they want to be. There's obviously, that's complemented by a fully integrated open space network which reflects and is drawn out of the environmental attributes of the site, some of those issues of linkage and connection, and that sort of thing have been paramount in defining that area. As Luke noted, the very steep tree area at the southwest corner, that was at council's direction removed from the, the master plan, and that's essentially because that area will stay essentially as it is, it's not covered by this approval. So that, that in terms of topography and vegetation provides quite a significant buffer on the western side. There are also local, local centre precincts, and importantly, the community facilities precinct, which caters for the expansion of the water treatment plan over time, and it also includes in that area suitable buffers. Even outside that, as Peter noted, there is some areas where, to use a term which seems to be used a lot in these COVID days, an abundance of caution, I love that. For an abundance of caution, what the planning document also does is it then limits the commercial uses in the southern part of that commercial area, so that there aren't uses there that would be incompatible with a facility of that kind. So, Greenfield Site gives you those opportunities to really plan those things in a lot more detail. I thought, probably everything else, I think Peter's covered in a lot of detail, I'd just sort of cover off on some of the questions that were answered by the councillor, or asked by the councillors. A question was asked about the staging, and as Peter noted, these developments unwind over a considerable period, so ten to fifteen years is the sort of timeframe, and there can be site-specific things that you discover on the way that might need staging and that to be, to emerge over time. But the approval certainly builds in certainty for council, so that all issues of staging and infrastructure provision are locked in and provided for well in advance of the land being developed. And that is secured through a range of other development approvals for development permits that would cover off on those things. In terms of access in and out to the site, I think the issue about the Collector Road link to the south and other exit points, if you like, from the development, it does exit on both sides, obviously there'll be at least three points at this point, obviously from the New England Highway side, but also on High Winds Drive or Townsend Street, sorry, on the other side. So there's, there's linkages there out of the site, obviously with the staging of the development moving forward, and as that southern parts develops and proposals are advanced to upgrade Kumbunji Road potentially as another route into the city, that link then becomes quite a viable link as the development matures to, to link through and, and link through there. Peter mentioned about the approach to units and dual occupancy and those sorts of things. Notwithstanding, the application came into council in 2017, and some of those policy approaches weren't thought about at that time, but council, in their assessment, the planners have been quite rigorous in ensuring that more recent policy positions on things like that are incorporated in this document. So, some of the changes to the variation scheme document included bringing the dual occupancy and the subdivision provisions to do with hatchet lots and a range of other things. So in that sense, the variation scheme document, even though the original draft of that was made or lodged with council some four years ago, it's been progressively evolved to pick up some of those new policy approaches, so that this area isn't treated any different from comparable areas in the balance of the city. The issue about open space, the issue wasn't so much there wasn't enough open space, it's the fact that council's local government infrastructure plan has a fair, a fair piece of the site outside the priority infrastructure area where it hasn't planned future parks, so that need is recognized, it's being met through the master plan with areas being allocated to open space, so there's sufficient land, and then obviously on top of that contributions which will go to either additional land or embellishment of those areas. So the net result is through a number of different means to make sure there is sufficient park and it's developed to the correct standard. Council's planners have also ensured that there is a link in the document to council's desired standards of service, which set out all the standards in detail that parkland has to meet, and they are called up in the development of this area as it normally would be. Issues of linkage came up, as Luke noted, the open space system really works in with environmental values of the site to retain that. The land is in the urban footprint under the Southeast Queensland Regional Plan, and even at the regional level, there's higher level work in terms of some of those larger linkages across the region and locally as well. So there's nothing in this master plan or the variation scheme document that would cut across any of those provisions. In fact, quite to the contrary, they've been, been worked into what's happening. The issue was raised, a classic reverse amenity issue was raised about the sewerage treatment plant. This site has been the subject of a number of development proposals even before this one was lodged, and way back with a previous proposal, there, and there is a state planning policy that deals with buffers to those sorts of facilities, there's complementary provisions in council's planning scheme which this development all complies with. But I can put council's mind to rest to some extent that the detailed site-specific modeling done on previous proposals identified only that very southwest corner of the site as potentially being subject to any concerns, and that's actually outside the, the variation scheme area. So it's, forms part of that, that hilly area. So there's no impact, practical or statutory on, on meeting those setbacks. The principal cycle network, as Peter noted, goes through the site, around the area that council are going to use for expansion of the treatment plant, and then back out onto the highway. That's shown indicatively, because we're recognizing both from the applicant's point of view and council's point of view, you do need a level of flexibility as, you know, main roads will change their intentions over time. So the document's worded in a way that development must take account of providing that network. So as basically applications come in and the plans for that network are tightened up, there would be sufficient flexibility in there to, to locate that where it's ultimately decided to go by others, but certainly it is planned for and development can't proceed that would be inconsistent with its provision, which is probably the key point. So they were the main issues I wanted to add. Also wanted to just quickly particularly thank Danielle and Peter Swan. The development's obviously been in the system for a while, as these larger ones can, can tend to be, but there's been some really positive changes there, I think, in recent times, and we've been really encouraged by the proactive, pragmatic and very detailed process we've been through, but certainly we've covered a lot of ground with council over the last couple of months in particular. And I'd particularly like to pass on the thanks to those two officers for their efforts in getting this to council today.
Well, thank you Andrew, thank you for thanking them, because we often don't get a lot of thanks, but it's really encouraging to hear that it's been a positive experience for you. So is there anything councillors wanted to ask of Andrew that we haven't covered off on? He hasn't covered off on, no? I think you're off the hook. Good on you, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so can I have someone move that we reinstate standing orders? Councillor McDonald, councillor Summerfield, all those in favour? Okay, so the recommendation is there before you, that council approved development application number MCUI20176624 for preliminary approval for material change of use, operational work, building work and reconfiguring a lot, including a variation request pursuant to the provisions of section 60 and 61 of the Planning Act 2016, and subject to the recommendations below and subjects to the conditions listed below. Do I have someone move that recommendation? Councillor Summerfield, councillor Carl?
Just a question Chair, we didn't have anyone speaking against it.
No.
No, thank you.
So we have a mover and a seconder, all those in favour? It's carried unanimously. And that is the conclusion of the meeting at 3:03. Thanks everyone.